Six oh three, gonna call to order this hybrid remove. We're gonna start the pledge allegiance, spell that moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you seen it? And the report consideration of the town councils proposed fiscal year twenty twenty two. And then Lisa, you've included in the package, you might be good to share the screening, maybe that agenda item or just write general discussion, sorry. If I share the agenda screen to folks to see.
Okay. Let me see if I can make it bigger so those at home can see it. How's that?
That should be good, thank you. So obviously on Tuesday the third, the budget did not pass, so we're reconvening, as is required by charter, to submit a second budget to be put forward for the referendum which will be held on the seventeenth. But I share myself met yesterday with Lisa Hancock and some town stats and check the consensus ideas for a second budget. And I believe Lisa has under item five, some proposals for the council to consider. So Lisa, do you would like to start off with the summary and some of your processes and explanation for the adjustments that are being proposed?
Yep, I'm gonna read what's in my little summary that I put together because it kind of covers everything that put in here. First of all, just to let everyone know that the new referendum is going to be on May seventeenth from six AM to eight PM at the recreation center on Old Post Road, one oh four Old Post Road. And we've made arrangements to make sure that there aren't any sports events and things like that so that the parking isn't a problem limiting some of the activities that are going on there. So hopefully that'll be a smoother process this time. I just wanted to let everybody know. As Steve had mentioned, Councilor Jones, Chairman Jones had mentioned, we did meet to talk about some ideas that I had with budget as well as what each caucus had. And my proposed budget this evening has a new recommendation that reverses, reduces the overall budget by three hundred and ninety-five thousand and two hundred and eight dollars. Proposed mill rate for the real estate and personal property will decrease by one point four three percent or minus point five three mills to be a new mill rate of thirty-six point five eight. The motor vehicles will be capped at a thirty-two point four six rate. From my understanding, the legislation passed and the governor, I don't know if he has signed it just yet, but I know it's on its way for the governor to sign, so I incorporated the lower mill rate for the motor vehicles. So that's less than even the mill rate for the residential taxes. In addition to that, the state is providing six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars to offset the loss in the tax revenue due to the downed motor vehicle rate cap. This revenue is being included in the revised budget revenue sources. The reimbursement amount is based on the prior year's grand list, does not take into account the increase in the motor vehicles for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year grand list. I'm being advised that this is an estimated dollar amount at this time, it could possibly change and hopefully go higher, but we won't know until they get all their final numbers together at the state level. If I look at my calculations, it appears to be about sixty-eight thousand dollars short in the state, so we will see what happens with that. All of that is incorporated into the new mill rate to make sure that we're made a hundred percent. The total town expenditures on the town side are reduced by ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars for a revised operating budget of thirteen million, seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars or three point two five percent increase in spend. Board of Education expenditures are decreased by three hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars for a revised operating budget of forty-one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven, seven twenty-three for an increase of two point two five percent. Debt and capital remain unchanged, so the total proposed budget would be fifty-nine million, seven ten, nine ninety-nine with an overall spending increase of two point five seven percent. This is not a tax increase, it is a spending increase. A majority of the residents will have property tax decreases and each motor vehicle will be taxed at the lower mill rate rather than our last referendum where everything was under one mill rate. I cannot confirm if that will result in an increase or a decrease for each individual's motor vehicles. It's all going to depend on how new your vehicle is, what it's assessed at, if you had it last year, what it was assessed at last year. So that's gonna be on an individual basis to determine what your personal cost would be, but it will be taxed at a lower mill rate. The items that I'm proposing as a reduction on the town operating but elimination of the labor position within the public works operation and a delayed hiring of the senior center administrative assistant. Without the labor position, we will remain with the challenges of addressing the storm response and other public works needs. I'm attaching information from our public works director regarding the need for your reference. The senior center will also have to will have to close if we cannot find someone to be there when the director is out ill or on vacation. Programs will remain limited to what the director can currently manage without additional assistance. In communications, I know some of the board of members, board of education members are willing to work in some of the emails that I have seen are willing to work together. Certainly, that's between all of you. So with my proposed budget, that's, that's what I have recommended moving forward, about fifty-nine point seven million, which would result in a decrease in point five three bills. Percent decrease in taxes are probably set. As well as the decrease in one three percent. What was that, one point four three percent decrease? Yes, yeah, one point four three percent decrease in residential personal property tax rates. And again, the mill rate for the motor vehicles will go down to three-two-point-four-six, so we'll have two separate mill rates. That's in my proposal. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Lisa, I'll open the floor to any questions or council members.
Yes, that's what we've got. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just finished writing my notes on here. Um, so Lisa, I, I sent you over an email before regarding the how the two hundred thousand dollars on the unallocated funds, yeah, no, I'm not gonna.
I didn't bring it up.
I sent you an email five seconds ago, could you respond to it? No. And as far as, because my biggest concern is the use of the two hundred thousand dollars in the unallocated funds. So I guess I'll start off with, before we get to that, my first question is, what kind of revenues are we looking at as far as a surplus? Are we looking at any surplus revenues in this budget at the end of the year?
I think we were, but I don't have my numbers right in front of me. I'm sorry, but I do have my book where I estimated some of that. I know that we were receiving some additional revenues this year and there were going to be some savings in expenditures. I don't know on the board of education side if there's going to be any savings this year, but I'm here that information. Sorry, I don't have it right at my fingertips here.
My question is, is it gonna be more than the two hundred thousand dollars?
I have a minute.
It's important, so no rush.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. I'm showing a let me explain it from it's a little blurry and it's a little small. I'm showing a reduction to fund balance this year of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand is an estimated amount. However, we had planned to use almost one point two million. So out of that number, we're only actually going to use about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand based on the estimates that I had at the time that I put this budget together. So you had anticipated with the beginning use of, the beginning budget of the year, I think we had four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the use of between fund balance and the municipal stabilization fund. And then throughout the year, you also included another seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars allocated to the board of education split between the COVID relief fund and the one percent reserve fund for them. So that, that's the use of fund balance. Even though when they turn money back at the end of the year, it goes into fund balance and then the next year we take it back up. So our amount to use was that four hundred and sixty plus the almost eight hundred thousand. From what I'm estimating is that we will probably only use, like I said, in here it looks like two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that's what I have. And that is due to some additional revenues that we anticipate receiving. Some of that will go into the municipal stabilization fund, but the way it's recorded, municipal stabilization actually is part of the general fund, fund balance, the way they make us record it. There were some excess revenues for taxation, there was the most significant revenue that we received in excess was the ECS funds from the state. Last year, when we budgeted for those funds, we had budgeted about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars less in our budget number. And the state legislature ended up holding it whole for one year, well, two years now. So we didn't experience that reduction, so those revenues will also be generated into part of the fund balance at the end of the year.
And the reason why I ask is just because, I mean, the biggest issue I have, of course, is that if we're gonna be experiencing surplus in in or taking two hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to the unallocated fund, just simply to reduce the mill rate as proposed, that's, that's, that from where I see, from what I've seen in prior information. I mean, I just don't understand that. I mean, we're, especially if we've had this, you know, windfall money, you know, even, even with the reduction in some of the amounts that we're gonna be getting with the cap off on the automobile taxes, still a significant amount of money. And so if we're getting that, my feeling that that should be used towards reducing the mill rate rather than us spending it and then drawing two hundred thousand dollars off the unallocated funds to, to do that.
I'm confused what you're, I am using the revenue from the state for the the motor vehicle reimbursement as part to offset the mill rate. That is already in the revised budget.
Well, so I guess my bottom line is, why are we using the unallocated ones then as part of, as part of this? I understand that we budgeted for it before and it was included in the budget. But if we have a surplus in funds, why are we using it then?
Usually, in, in the years when I first started working here, we always used a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand each year. Over the years, we've had ups and downs in the use of fund balance. And more so, we've been very fortunate to have increases in fund balances rather than reductions, even in the years that we plan on using them for various reasons. So it's, it's been consistently used over the years. Over the last few years, it was substantially higher, but we still ended up having money turned back due to attrition, things like that. COVID didn't help with a lot of things. So in this year, I understand what you're saying, I'm proposing estimating maybe a two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's use of the fund balance where we had originally planned to use one point two million of them. So, yes.
But is that not the money that we're giving to the board of education? We're not using the fun or expense.
Oh, no.
Just last month or so, when we looked at the financials, we were revenue surplus.
And you do.
Right, so we're not using the fun to pay our expense, that two hundred and twenty-seven thousand is the net of the money that we're transferring for to that. So we're not using, so if that's the case, like we're saving a million dollars.
Right, because what would have normally have happened, had we not had excess revenues, we would have had to use more of the unassigned fund balance to provide the funds to the board of education.
Because it comes in and goes out. Like, it's not, we're not using it as much as it's a parking lot. At the end of the year, they have money left, it comes, it parks, we give it back.
Yeah, right, but that still impacts your fund balance each year going up and down. So with that said, that's, that's how it worked this year. Some years it's up, some years it's down. So consistently, I look at the value of our fund balance, I look at our, our, we have a fund balance policy, we have limits as to how far down we can go. We are, unassigned fund balance should be between ten and fifteen percent and we are, we are but we are, we are right over, depending if you look at it at a budgetary basis or a fund balance basis, we are over the fifteen percent as of last year or in my estimated year in on a gap government.
Five and seventeen, two months expense, seventies.
Right, two, now, getting back to that, like I said, if you're looking at our budgetary basis, that's different than our rating agencies looking, is called GAAP, generally accepted accounting principle, not everyone knows that. So with that said, the, the rating agencies prefer that you have a two-month allotment of expenditures as your fund balance, your total fund balance. We are not exactly at that, but we're very close. It's probably close to ten million dollars. If I just round up and say sixty million, divide it by twelve months, I do it that way, it's, it's about a five million dollars a month. So ten million dollars and we're almost at well, actually, we will be at ten million if my estimates come true by the end of this fiscal year. So we will be at that reserve slightly over. And so I felt very comfortable to try to offset the impact on, on the citizens by using just the standard little amount that we've used in previous years. What that allows for is if we do end up with any excess revenues that maybe our tax, maybe we collect a hundred percent versus ninety-nine percent, if any of that comes in, then you end up not using your fund balance and you did not tax the taxpayers on the full amount of what we would collect. So it's kind of giving the taxpayer a little bit of the break where I felt comfortable. I would not recommend using any more than that because you do have to have your reserves for emergencies, storms, things like that that arise. But I, I did feel comfortable with using that to try to offset the mill rate even more in a way of like a refund for the years that money did come back to us.
I mean, just because, just for the same reason that you said before about, you know, about unforeseen expenses that we're already, as you said, at the limit where we are right now, where you feel comfortable taking on that fund and I just can't see why, if we have this extra surplus, why we're not, not even using it. And the mere fact that we budgeted for it before isn't, I mean, is that this is how we've always done it and this is what we had budgeted earlier, but now we have more funds than we anticipated, that doesn't, it just doesn't conform with me, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't match up for me. So I guess that's, that's my biggest concern. And I, I mean, I, I, again, as I've said previously, I, I'm really against using any type of the unallocated fund, given this additional revenue fund, revenue resources that we've gotten. And I think it's something that we needed, that I would say that we need to find another way.
Well, when you're suggesting additional revenue resources, in, in which revenues are you speaking to?
So, so we had an increase in the revenues from the motor vehicle taxes, correct?
Sort of. What, how that works is the six hundred and some odd thousand, what happens is we are billing it out at a much lower mill rate than we would have filled it out for. So now that, even though the state is supposed to make us whole at a hundred percent, that money that the state is proposing is not at a hundred percent at this time. So it's not an excess of revenue, it's just to try to make up that gap between the thirty-two, four-six capped motor vehicle mill rate and then the other mill rate to do the rest of the property taxes and such for the town. So you're having to make up revenue and that what that is, it's not an excess windfall, is to try to make up for what you would have been able to tax your motor vehicles at, had you been able to use the full mill rate. So it's just making up, making us whole.
I've got, you know, other questions, but I don't want to monopolize time right now. It's neutral here is.
Thank you, Councilman Lebov.
Thank you.
So Lisa, I guess, can you help explain then, because I haven't had time to run any numbers and I'm a little foggy right now, but is the assertion here that with the reduced mill rate that is going to eat into what we had originally assumed for the net grand? So what is the change in the net? I'm sorry, what does the new mill rate mean to the change in the net grand list for the motor vehicles? So we know the net grand list went up because of the inflated car costs, right? So with the new reduced mill rate, does that negate the increase?
It, it's going to be different for, for every individual. The, the grand list number is not going to change. The grand list is what it came in. What will change now is versus if, if we were still at a thirty-seven eleven mill rate, the cars will no longer be taxed at the higher mill rate, they'll be taxed at a lower mill rate. So if you look at, for example, if anyone took their tax bill and say, or their assessed value on their motor vehicle, they would look at what their value is now and they would multiply that times the thirty-six point five eight that I'm proposing versus
Seventy-two point four six.
There, I think Tammy's asking for the total, not person by person. No, but what I'm trying to explain to her is that each person is going to be different because somebody's motor vehicle value could have gone down on their appraised value, some could have gone up. Right. So the thing is, if you want to see how this benefits you as an individual, you would have to take the new mill rate, the higher one for the personal property and calculate what your taxes would have been under that. And then you calculate it under the thirty-two, forty-six and you will see the differential between what you would have paid versus what you now pay in, in any event, it'll be less.
Right, so that part, I get that. Katie's right. Like what I'm looking at here though is we saw, I don't remember the exact number, it was like what, one point something million increased revenue driven by the net grand list of the inflated grand list for the vehicles, right?
Actually, no, it was driven on last year's grand list. So it wasn't the inflated one that has been discussed in the new year.
Thirty-seven eleven would have been, right?
Right, right, and now they've reduced that.
So we knew we were gonna have an increase in revenue from the motor vehicles, right? That was, I'm just gonna pick one point six million, okay? And that was driven off the thirty-seven point one one or whatever the
Whatever the state calculated it at, yes.
And then now it's capping at seventy-two point four six, so I'm looking at the differential between what we can expect to see, is that the six hundred and ninety-seven?
Yes, yes, whatever number it is, I don't have the exact number handy, but yes, it would be the amount that the state gave us, I think it was six hundred and ninety-seven thousand and change. That is the amount.
It's about half of like
Right, because
Then that increase in revenue.
Right, the original one point two million or so that they proposed to us was based on us billing out at a twenty-nine mill rate cap. So now they raised the mill rate cap and reduced the amount of money they have to give us. The state.
Right.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up question? Would that be okay?
No, jump in, listen.
So I'm trying to think about this from a big picture point of view, right? I'm looking, I'm just looking at the, the budget book that we had and it looks like the motor vehicle assessment value has gone up, right, as we've been talking about?
Yes.
And so from a big picture, we had anticipated and budgeted for X number of dollars coming in for the motor vehicle portion of the revenues.
This is correct.
Okay, and that number is now going from our residents, that number is now going to be capped at thirty-two point four-six mills. So we are seeing a reduction in revenue coming in. The state, of course, the state budget is bringing, is not meeting the, the entire gap, right?
That is correct.
And that's why you said in here, the estimate, right? No, the estimate here that you put in this document was sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, and that could change. Sure, we may get it off.
Okay, and I think yesterday at the legislature, it was, it was, we were told, the legislature was told that towns would be made whole through Merce.
I have not received this information through various councils.
I know. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to just make sure.
I did try to confirm that information.
I think we're, yeah, the same, pretty much. Thank you. So I just wanted to, to confirm one other thing. We have our contracted negotiated price for fuel. We're not gonna be impacted by these ridiculous six gallon prices because we're locked in.
We're locked.
Okay. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about the assumptions that you have in here regarding the admins and I wanted to kind of push back a little bit on that. And you said you wanted to delay out the senior center position and not the rec position and I guess
The rec position is already pushed out to next April.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to kind of balance here why we can't have one person. They're both admins, so I know that there are different departments in that, but in the rec department, historically based on our budget, pretty much everything, with the exception of a couple of things, are revenue, regular net revenue neutral, it's a really hard day to make, neutral for us. So if we had somebody that could just help out until they create enough programming to pay for a full-time resource, I would much rather have the senior position in before the, the rec piece of it.
I, I have discussed that with staff and I've also, Mike Wilkinson, may or may not, I'm sure he's still in line. I discussed it with him, the idea of maybe doing a position sharing. Beverly is here as well, if you would like some input from her, but before I get there. We talked about the position, it, it really is two different positions, it's a union-involved position. So there's issues there regarding a union. If you were to split it, it would be seventeen and a half hours a week, almost difficult to try to make it be productive and to cover the needs of what the senior center has as well as the recreation center. My hopes with the recreation center position is to start it out and hopefully it will start generating more revenues and I'd like to eventually have it fully self-supporting within their recreation program account. In the beginning, right now, revenues are so down, they, they were hurt drastically due to COVID. And so to try to get them back up on their feet, it's And so to try to get them back up on their feet, it's going to take a little bit of time. And with one person there. Trying to do it all, it's, it's very difficult. At the senior center, we have the same situation. They have their different programs. And you need someone in the center. That, the problem that we have now is there's only the one director there. We do have another employee, but she's mainly to be out on the road visiting her clients and, and she's not really a member. An employee of the senior center itself. And the concern is if, if Kim is out. Kim is the director at the senior center. If she's out ill or, you know, she's been a long-term employee, she has vacation. There's no one to cover the senior center while she's out. And that means either we try to find somebody if we can. And which is challenging as it is and. Or we have to close the center, which I'd rather not do.
Well, I'm going to push back a little bit on that. Because Fran and Becky ran that place without an admin. And if Fran wasn't there, there was Becky. So I understand it's not Becky's full-time role. But I, they have managed that senior center since inception. With the two people there. I wholeheartedly support an admin there. I support an admin there as soon as possible. But to say that we have to close the senior center.
Now, I don't mean that, that we definitely would have to. It would be if we had no other alternative. I can't say for sure, but people are starting to. Think about retirement and things like that. I, I don't know for sure if that's going to happen. But if that happens, it's going to be very difficult. To try to find someone to kind of step into those shoes, just as well as Fran, who was working. Crazy, crazy hours, um, and doing things at, on her own, at home, things like that. That, you know, expecting someone to, to fall into doing all that extra stuff as well. It's, it's a different. Environment these days with employees, just even trying to find them. We're very fortunate to have Kim. Can I let Beverly share? Or do you mind me?
Fran actually stopped it today and she admitted, she probably put in forty to fifty hours a week. And Becky was her best friend and sidekick and they did a dynamic. We, we found that there's more elderly outreach or case management needed. There's more conflicts at home, people aging at home. Not necessarily covered at senior center, but having struggles, being independent at home. So Becky's time is really kind of gone on the road. And working with that population base. It's a different group that I've come into that expect more programs and more, you know, different. It's a change. It's, it's, we're really seeing a change. I think Kim has done outstanding job picking up, you know, especially after Fran and. Yeah, those are hard shoes to, to fill and, uh, you know, and, and doing more programs. She's really conscientious. But she's also realizing there's a lot to learn out there too, and to coordinate with other senior centers and, and she. And to bring in some grants to the senior center as well. So. And, and, and back in the day, they used to leave volunteers alone at the senior center. I'm not really comfortable with that. And I think a staff person to be there will be open for just reliability or those, you know, safety.
Like I said, I fully support the admin there. Absolutely. But I, I kind of looking at this between. I don't know what opportunity there might be for the rec center or a part-time funding through ARPA or something like that. We talked about. Paid, like paying for recreation fees for people for the summers to get kids out and stuff like that. Um, I see the senior center as a need, the rec center as a want, until we get. Um, enough funding to sustain it like all the other positions there. But that's, you mentioned reducing the senior center aid. What's the value on the reduction of that start date there?
About twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, I think we can find. I think like from a trend perspective and then if we look at stuff like twenty-nine thousand is. Like I, I would not want to delay the senior center hire because again, I think our seniors suffered. As much as the younger groups in town, if, you know, across the board. So I would like to see that one. Stay in at a early enough, a higher rate and for us to find that twenty-nine thousand dollars. Someplace within. And then I'm going back to what Lou said. I think it's been easily in the last four or five years that we've had. Revenues left at the end of the year. You know, we've had revenues left at the end of the year. Um, so I'm comfortable with that being one of our questionable. Um, if we had to use something from the fund, which I don't think we will. Um, I, I don't think we will, but.
One of the things this year, just to add on to that comment you just made. Just based on, on knowing what a challenging year we're having. I had, I'm still conservative. But I used to be extremely conservative in a lot of my estimates. And you will notice. That I did pump up or increase a lot of estimates as far as the liquid tax collections, things like that. Um, so a lot of those extra revenues that came in the past, I cannot guarantee are going to be. The same going forward because I tried to build every penny I could into the budget. To take on some of those trends and to hope that they will continue. So rather than having them left over, I'm trying to build them in so it reduces the mill rate, the impact on the mill rate.
Sounded like they just we needed the rec centers additional support for groups because of. Issues that people have and. Were on that. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, that's why, that's why, like I said before, you know, one of the things I think we should consider from an ARPA perspective is looking at waiving fees for programming for the summer. But that gets back to hiring people to run those programs. And that's not an act. That's like hiring the people to actually run the programs. People want to do that. So. You know, I think there's opportunity in there. That's also something that's a.
That's the thing. The rec center is, um, I'm calculating something here. The rec center is not an admin. It is more of a recreation coordinator, programmer, program.
Yeah, I think just starting to interject, I think Bruce presented. He said that essentially this position would help him having to go weekend sporting. The referee had to actually be involved in it. So he performed on the higher level and program coordinator. Was able to go in and actually manage those events that are being, you know, increasing. I know Bruce is on. I think that might be him unmuting.
Yeah, no, I'm on. Tasking, I had to do a showing at the lodge at the same time that we had delayed.
Did you repeat that Bruce?
I said, I'm, I'm sorry, I've been multitasking. I had a showing at the lodge. We had delayed a showing at the lodge. Um, so I'm, I'm double duty here.
So would you be able to clarify what the role of that program coordinator was going to be for you just to?
Yeah, a program coordinator is specifically to, um. One, help run some of the programs that we currently run, but also to create and implement new programming into the town. Um, which would ease my time in regards to all the other. Things that I need to do with my administrative work, field, um, you know, field scheduling, lodge work, et cetera, et cetera. But this person's specific role would be, uh, creating, implementing and, you know, a, all the steps, staffing, training. Um, for these new programs that we implement into the, into the town.
It also be assisting with either the onboarding or the oversight of the summer hires that you usually have.
Yeah, um, uh, that would definitely help with overseeing some of the programming. So I, it might be like a specific, like, like. Summer camp and any other new programs that they come up with, um, to implement into the town. Oversee those programs. I would still be overseeing all the other programming, um, seen fit. You know, we have wiffle ball, we have STEM program and we have art programs going on during the summer. We have adult softball going on during the summer. Yet we still have the rentals, the fields, uh, scheduling. So it would just lax my time, um, and give me some, um, more time to focus on. Um, other things for, um, the community.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Councilwoman Meecham for.
That's fine. My, my last, uh, my last thing is I'm, I'm, I'm assuming at some point we're going to kind of like tuckle up what we. Would like to see or whatever. I know we don't have a lot of time. Have enough time to do this, but, um. Um, I am still firmly in the, in the camp of, you know, our residents are hurting. We had a vote that expressed that. That they did not like the number that they saw. We're seeing like the inflated costs of everything across the spectrum. And I personally, I know right now we're looking at a one point three, one point four-three percent reduction. I'm more in the camp of I'd like to see a two percent reduction. If possible. I don't know what that would look like. I don't know what that number is. I sent, I know I sent it to you and I know you're getting a lot of stuff.
Like over three hundred emails today. Yeah, I haven't gotten to half of them.
I, I understand. So I don't know if there's like a, a quick calculation we could do to see what that reduction would look like. Or anything like that, but that's kind of where my head is right now, um, just from the perspective of the residents, but.
I just asked to that, what are your suggestions?
We're responsible for the amount that is, that we are asking.
I'm just going to just try and bring it back to the center a little bit. I personally feel like Council Vice Chair Lee and I work really well together. You know, understanding the two very different perspectives on this budget attracted me to some consensus and how the highest, I think that's what we can get tonight. You know, obviously we were more partisan in our first budget and sometimes I try to pride myself on being as bipartisan as possible. And I think what is being proposed. Is meeting a number of needs from both sides. You know, it doesn't leave everybody happy, but it doesn't leave necessarily every single person. Furious, I would think essentially or upset. So I'm hoping that this. So just from my perspective, I think we should move forward with what has been presented. I know that there will be some challenges for the town. For public works, there'll be some challenges for the Board of Ed. We've heard from a number of Board of Ed members. Willing to work with whatever we do. Some said we should not go much further than a certain number, not change anything before. You know, I think at some point we just have to reach consensus and. Obviously, my top concern, one of my top concerns with moving forward is. If this next budget doesn't pass, we're going to have to meet again during our town manager interviews and search process. And very concerned that finalists that might be out there and observing this are going to see. A significant level of dysfunction and not find talent worthwhile to work for. And that's just my, it's a different topic, but it's something. Key concern about moving forward with the budget. So I want to work together the both sides.
No, I'll, I'll agree with that too. I mean, we did work together on this. I'm very good on it as it is, as it has been presented. So. I agree with Steve. We did spend a lot of time. We spent, I'm sure we've all spent many hours going over this. So, uh, from my perspective too. I think this is a reasonable document. I think, um, I'm ready to, I'm ready to forward with it as well.
I'm just making sure we get this, the chance to go on the board once. So council. Thank you.
I'm not okay with the three hundred thousand dollar reduction to the Board of Education. I recognize that my perspective is. Not encompassing the experiences of everyone in our camp. But. There are over two thousand schoolchildren. In the town of Tallent who are having a very rough time due to COVID. And. Three of those kids live in my house. And they're not getting the services they need out of schools right now. I cannot in good conscience. Vote. To. Reduce the funding that. A bipartisan Board of Education voted in favor of. Most of that increase is going to. Contracted salary increases. Those have been cited on, they're voted on, they're non-negotiable at this point. To say to our kids. That. Their mental health services. Which is part of this increase. It's not something that we're willing to fund. It is okay with me. I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for council members?
Real quick, I appreciate all the work that the chair and vice chair did to help me know it worked. Week, so, um. Obviously, we're disappointed, felt that we couldn't meet budget for the voters voted and. I really want it to pass the next time and I think we all do. Right, I would hope we all want it to pass. I would advocate next time altogether. Whatever we put forward is a budget worth voting for. I hear what you're saying, Katie. You know, I certainly make me cry. I serve on the Board of Education. But I think we need to work together. Be back there. I don't. Department stuff out and all that because that's, we've talked about it many times. I deal with. So. I don't know if this is the only option. Up there, I don't know. I, I don't, but. I think we're in a really sticky situation. So, um, and again, one of you said that. Board of Education, seeing if not to believe it here. You know, some of the Board of Education members recognize. Failed budget and seem to want to, um. Try and figure something out together. And I agree, I hope things aren't going to be cut like the. They put in there. As much for it. I mean, we went to bat for them. And so, that's all I really. Thank you both again.
Thank you. Have some good check. Are there any other comments? I think we tried as councillor, I should be. Tried to create a space off of the total budget to be proportional to the percentages each budget represents. Certain directions, but that was the effort we tried to make with this.
Um, certainly today, actually councillor and I were looking at several of the different capital projects and. We were discussing different alternatives as to what, what could possibly be proposed. When you look at, for example, some of the capital, some of it is covered with bonding, some of it is covered with. For example, the fire department, a lot of their things is covered with funds that solely belong to them. So we cannot. Take their funds and use it to pay for education or pay for other capital needs, things like that. We looked at several different alternatives because the amount that the actual tax dollars. Are paying for in this particular budget.
are paying for in this particular budget is about $255,000. A big chunk of that, a, a good chunk of that, not all of it, has to do with the burning water pollution control debt that we have to pay. We are legally obligated to pay that and we cannot reduce it. Some of the alternatives discussed were to maybe have the Board of Education pay for many of their capital needs, switch some general, general fund for capital reserves, funds used and maybe have the Board of Ed pay the, the, and, and I can understand doing that. The thing that would have to be considered however, is that this year we're at 255,000 for general fund use for capital beyond all our other financing alternatives. Next year we'll be at 300, a little over 300,000. So if you were to cut down to say 50,000 in this year's budget by moving things around, the one thing you would have to consider, if, if you did it, then you know, that's up to all of you as a council to decide. But if you do it, then you have to remember next year, now you're gonna have to add rather than 50,000 to the budget, you'll have to add 250,000. Those are just the things that you would have to be aware of if that's the choice you made to do, to try to switch money around and, and, and do things. And, and you'd also have to, some of the things we were talking about was to look at pretty much all the Board of Ed capital that was funded with capital reserve funds and there was maybe a little bit with general fund to have the Board of Ed be able to pay for that 1% fund. That's certainly up to the Board of Education to make the decision as to if it would be funded or not. And you know, we, we can't make that decision for them. We can only advise that that's, you know, what we recommend if that were the case. So those are the things to consider. So regarding capital, that is the reason why I didn't propose to move anything around, but certainly it's a discussion point for all of you and you only have about five minutes to talk about it.
Thank you, councillor Con. Councilor Nuccio?
You, I, I mean, the only thing that I'd like to say is that just reinforcing that how they, how the Board of Education spends their money is up to them. We have no purview. You can set, set the amount that, that we're approving, but that's it. There's other funds that they have available that can be utilized as well.
Not for recurring expenses.
Exactly. Not for recurring expenses, but there's other ways that they could then shift money around so that they can, so that they can cover those recurring expenses and offset it with, with the, with those other funds that they have available. So there's a lot of different ways that there can be money moved around. So I understand what people are saying about not wanting to reduce it. There's other funds available that they can use to fund these recurring expenses just by shifting it around in their own budget and using these other funds to fund these other, anything else that they may feel is appropriate. So that, that's, that's my only comment on that. Um, I'm sorry, I, I know that we have to vote on it. There's other things that I'd like to question about because I still feel that we could do better, that there's other, other ways that we could find savings and I'm really torn about how I, how I feel about this budget. I understand how much work is gonna put in with. I, you know, I don't know. So anyway, thank you. I think it's true.
Before we vote, I now I think we should have put the mill rate back up. I think it really hurt us. Thank you.
Well, is, are we gonna vote separately on that resolution?
We already voted to not have that on there.
Yeah, there's, yes, there was a, item number six is a separate resolution to move forward with that piece of it.
Yes.
Item number five, you started the first get budget.
So I guess I would.
I'm sorry. I would like to see us reduce the capital budget. Instead of it being 255, to take out all of the Board of Education capital items. It's five items for a total of $138,000. I'd like to see us take that out of our capital budget. If the Board of Ed wants to buy it, they can buy it off their 1% fund.
But it's already been included in the capital budget. I mean, that's something that, again, if we're going by that.
It would, it would reduce the amount of, if you look on your packet, I'm sorry, on page six, I guess Lisa has it up there. What we're being asked to consider is the $255,000 allocation, oh, here it is, to the capital budget from this year's expenditures. And that is all in our year one capital budget. I would like to take out $138,000 of Board of Education capital expenses from our one-year capital plan. Those expenses are either being paid directly out of the general fund or from CNRE. We can move around things in the capital fund to simply remove those five Board of Education capital expenses. We're not telling the Board of Ed how to do it, but they have their 1% fund. They can use it to buy those things. So we reduce our total operating budget. We take $138,000 out of that $255,000. And instead of reducing the Board of Education, as Lisa has suggested, by 308,000, 302,198, we take the $138,000 and put it back towards Board of Ed. It keeps the bottom line exactly as Lisa is recommending. It just takes out five capital items that the town would otherwise pay for, for the Board of Education. These are the five specific items in our budget for Board of Ed. They are the birch growth tractor, two floor machines, which is in one line item, the dishwasher, the THS oven and the THS loading dock. That's my proposal.
That would then though is that would, that would only be at one time. Help that would keep the uncurrent expenses higher.
Yes.
And put us in a hole for next year when we need the $300,000 for capital for.
It does, it's not a soul for next year. We just are starting at a different spot.
Phrase that however you want. From a budgetary perspective, if it's in the approved budget plan, it would be, it would be a hole in the budget that we would have to then fill again next year plus keep the ongoing expenses.
Could we just take, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I mean, I, I agree that that's where, this is something where I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna make a quick point. I don't want to keep the Miracle Bill meeting waiting any further. Kind of had multiple delays and obviously it wasn't a deal to have this meeting only be an hour. I think six o'clock was the most suitable time that most people who are working professionals could get to this, to council on time for this meeting. And it was just unfortunate timing that we had the meeting at seven o'clock right after. So I would, unless there's any strenuous conversations, I would really like to propose or entertain a motion to approve Lisa's recommended reductions to the budget, which would be for the town government, it would go down to, sorry, Lisa, you can fill that number. To the 13, 017396 for the Board of Ed. It's revising the operating budget to 41,77723. Debt of 4.7 million capital, 255,800. Which would be then a total budget of 59.
710999.
Yes. I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Very second.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. We are asking some of our most vulnerable residents to pay the price of our town budget. And this budget should never have happened the way it did. There are numerous process problems. And now we're asking our youngest residents to pay the price. It is completely, completely unacceptable. We have over, I'm sorry, my computer stopped. We have emails that have come in, which I've read and I put them into very broad categories. Right now we have 24 emails that have come in that ask us to lower the budget, 57 that say, don't look. The budget referendum fails. I, I accept that. That's how democracy works, as one of our commentators told us. But another person who sent us an email, which was a neutral email, wasn't up or down, said, and I quote, "For years we have lamented the challenges of raising revenue so that we can properly fund services to the taxpayers of this community. Now we have a year with a small uptick in revenue and we still can't pull that off? This isn't okay. It's not okay for our kids. It's just not. And we are, we are not providing the services that our children need. Our kids, they're 20, there's, there's over 2,000 children in our community who are in a rough place. We heard from the Board of Education, it was a bipartisan budget that came out of the Board of Ed. I am okay reducing the Board of Ed budget tonight. I am prepared to vote to do that. But to, to reduce it by over $300,000 is flagrantly irresponsible."
Councilor Murray, I don't have any comments.
Mr. Shiller, with all due respect, I mean, this is something where every year the Board of Education budget comes in, every year that they, that they come in and that every year we've been increasing it over a certain amount. And the difference between the Board of Education budget and the town budget is that the Board of Education, every year we increase it, that sets the new standard for every year following. And so while I understand and I completely agree that we need to take care of our most vulnerable, how they do that, how the Board of Education does that is up to them. They can allocate the funds. If they feel that it's appropriate and it's something that they need to do, which I know that they have and I know that they will, that's up to them to, to allocate the funding. They have the funding available there. They have the other funds that are available that can be used for this. They can move money around in any different ways. So to say that we're taking money away from the, that's denying people these services, that's not accurate. They can fund it how they choose appropriate and they can fill in this gap with the funds that they have available for them.
That's simply not true.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry. I disagree. I disagree with that because there's other fundings that they can have, other funding streams that they have available, that the town does not. And that, again, every year, whatever we set this year will be the lowest that we can go for the next year. And that's how it's gone for every year for as long as I've lived here. And that's by statute. So to say that we're, you know, that we're denying them these services, this is something that they can appropriately plan for and that they can work on. This is, I, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying. I, I, I disagree with, with the fact that we are depriving people of these services. If they are that important, they can find a way to fund them. And I know that they will. And you know, I think it's something that we have to take a look at all of our taxpayers as well, all of our residents during a time of inflation, during a time when people are struggling to get back to normal for a lot of different things. You know, that, you know, I, I'm struggling with this budget because I think it's still too high. But it's something that, again, our, that the leadership has put together that I think is something that I still don't know how I'm going to vote on it, but it's something that they've done the best they can. And I think it's something that, 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 that was a, is a, is a solid budget. So we'll, we'll disagree on it. But I think that, I know that if it's something that's important enough, that we have the Board of Education representatives here, we have Dr. Willie here, they will appropriately fund it. Thank you.
Councilor Con.
If you wanna go, if you wanna go up the one department, I mean, there are several, fire department, we have the public work, we have private department. Might as well sit down, do everyone to zero and tell them, you know what, tell them the union, you know what?
But let's take a look at the difference. Let's say, I'm sorry, shake it.
No point where it's council con, we got, we got some point back and forth here. If everyone speaks one state, that's fine, but we can't get into debate. We need to, we're still in discussion, but.
Thank you.
It's not something that if you wanna, if you wanna go to what it, if you wanna think about it, talk about the money, talk about the money, talk about the way the fairness is. And I was, at one point I was opposed to talk to all. I was opposed. I was, I was fire department. I was. But with the pandemic, everything else is like, I'm, I'm afraid to lose. And as Lisa says, we are giving, we are going to give a 3% decrease to a public, public department. And I said, no problem, because I like to keep my, keep the, keep the hell. The other town was saying, why can't we, why can't we talk about that? If you want, if you want to talk about one department, we have to talk about every, every other department. Because it's, it's part of it. My job is, my job is to take care of the town if I cannot. And majority of it, honestly, from left to right, seven of us, seven out of four, four out of seven, their kids, their kids in car, is cool. Matter of the, everything, the prices are going up for everything. Prices are going up. You know that. Everybody knows that. Besides, I don't know about capital, but in town wise, everybody's paying, paying the price. There are a lot of people, I talked about it, there are a lot of people that they cannot afford it. With the gas prices, the grocery prices, everything else. So we like do what it makes sense. It's not something that I am, is, is my ego. There's no such a thing, I go, it's like what, we are here to serve the community. And if you cannot do it, it's all.
Thank you, councillor Con. Anything other comments before we go to real call vote?
Just a comment. I wish we had more time, so I'm sorry. It's the miracle. You know, people, I think you're just really, really important. Okay, I think it's a decent idea what you're proposing. I mean, is there any way some of those items can be used? I mean, I know we wouldn't discuss in subcommittee, but maybe that's a way to use money to help reduce capital and restore some money back to the Board of Education. So I mean, is everybody really opposed to reduce a, a small amount of capital to give back to the Board of Education? The motion's on the table.
We can't, we can't go outside. Don't you worry which way the question is going.
My. I don't have any comments on.
Do any other discussion? All right, the real call vote by Sherigan.
Hi.
Councilor Nuccio. Councilor Nubba. Councilor Nuccio.
I need a couple minutes.
Councilor Con. I have an eye. So right now we have three eyes, one or three eyes, one though. Nubba, Nuccio.
Hi.
I don't know.
It's for favor or by, by the favor to against. So that passes. Moving on to agenda eight six, which is approval resolution authorized in the form of ballot for the May 17. Any subsequent budget referendum. So there is a resolution for us. I have to make a motion to approve the ballot as made out in resolution with the revised numbers to be held at May 17, 2021 recreation set.
So with one caveat.
Yes.
Because this didn't, we didn't know at the time, the 32.46 no rate for the motor vehicles, that's part of it. I, I think you might have to refer to that because if you're looking at 36.58 mils.
It's different than motor vehicles.
The motor vehicles would be less and I think it's important that the citizens are aware that their motor vehicle taxes will be a no rate. So you may want to include that as part of the resolution.
I would entertain a motion as amended to provide the difference. Incorporating the change in the auto.
I will amend my, my motion.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Shiller. Last time we voted on removing the mill rate because of it being more confusing to people that when you add now a different, and not just one mill rate, but two mill rates in. I, I'm against including the mill rate. I think that just putting in the percentage, I think is something that I can support, but with the mill rates in there, especially given two separate mill rates. It's, we've had other, we had a full discussion of last time, why it was confusing. We had a full discussion on why it should not be included. And now I was actually surprised that you had included it this time around. So I, I can't support a, an application that has the mill rates in it, especially two separate mill rates for two separate things.
Councilor Nuccio.
I would actually say it a little differently than Lou. You know, we had a really lengthy discussion about the fact that.
I would actually say it a little differently than Lou. You know, we had a really lengthy discussion about the fact that by the charter. Charter, the vote is to approve the budget and. Not the mill, the mill rate is set after.
Yeah.
And that accounts for any revenue change. So if Lisa finds out that she's going to get that sixty-eight thousand dollars through Mercer. That affects our mill rate. And and we, if you, you lock us into a mill rate without having the flexibility of the revenues. And it wasn't, I brought it up in past councils. It wasn't even me who brought it up. But, you know, this is not, it doesn't follow the chart. The charter is the budget vote on the budget. And the mill rate is set within ten days of the. So I don't want to go back to putting something on here that locks us into something, especially when we've got influx. Of whether or not we're going to have more revenue coming from the state that could further reduce that mill rate. Because we don't vote on the revenue. We vote on the spend. And and the one other thing I forgot to mention here, you really should have, if you were going to have. The no rate, it really should have said requires an estimated. And and I was supposed to. Mention that, I had mentioned it earlier. It's up to you how, how you all want to do it.
I, I think taking that into consideration.
I'm willing to amend my motion to add an estimated mill rate. We have precedents in the past where the council has. Had the mill rate on the budget without the word estimated, and then has gone back and changed the mill rate. To a different number than was on the ballot. That's happened in years past.
I think it's just because we got quite a few emails about, you know, what was on there. There were, well, six, seven emails. You know, there was. Not the ton, but enough to be like. Where is it?
And it's unfortunate that the registrars didn't have more information. Up in past years, they've had a big poster of the budget flyer that was not up. On this, this Tuesday. I think there was confusion. There were a number of emails who believed that we. The budget that they voted on was to increase their taxes. We got a bunch of emails like that. And that's just not true. And maybe one of the reasons that they thought that was due to the mill. There might be other reasons, but.
Yeah, and at this point, because we don't have an explanatory text going out, you are not allowed to put anything into. The voting area with.
So there's no explanation to the votes this time.
Well, I mean, there'll be things that I'll certainly get out to the public online and such, and less, but still. You you cannot put anything in the polls. At this point. So what, whatever you have on the ballot is what they'll have. Whatever we can share publicly, which certainly I'll try to. Get out there every which way I can.
All right, I think we're gonna get a bit off track. It's not relevant to the, to the resolution. I'm. Surely with the idea that we. And I think it is important, but it's, it feels like we're just bouncing around a lot. As much as I like it, I think we just need to keep it consistent. Yeah, so I'm just saying, you know, it might be, or people get down and adjust it to a second vote. Roll call vote, Councilman Uchek.
Aye.
Councilman Luva.
No.
Councilman Nuccio.
Councilman Nuccio.
No.
By Sheri Egan.
No.
Councilman Khan. It's all right.
Aye.
I'm a, I just. We're so, it's so complicated, all right, with the car budget or the car tax and this, so.
Then can we take the percent increase off? Just the value? Shall the town of Towns' proposed budget be this?
I think it has to.
Per, per the charter, it says that.
It doesn't actually. It says that we have to vote up or down. And the majority wins. That's what the charter says.
For, for the, for the budget, when we, for posting the budget.
The, yes, the referendum question.
You're voting on the budget amount, you're voting on the amount of budget, but. I don't think it's very fair to the public to be like, here's a number we have, not going to tell you how this affects you, but.
Then we're not telling them all the information. We know that a number of voters thought they were voting on a tax increase. And they weren't.
They weren't voting on a mill rating, they said they were voting on a tax.
No, there was no, the mill rate went down.
The mill rate is not the tax.
I'm going to entertain a motion that the valid question is laid out. With the amended inclusion of the car tax. But not inclusive of the decrease in the mill rate, fortunately, which, if that makes sense, Lisa.
That shall the town of Towns' proposed twenty-twenty-two, two, twenty-twenty-three budget of.
Fifty-nine, seven, ten.
Fifty-nine, seven, ten, nine, ninety-nine. Reflecting a spending increase of two points, is it five, no, two point.
Oh, the percentage, two point five seven.
Two point five seven percent.
You want the dollar.
Increase, or the amount, which I don't know.
Which I have, but I can fill it in.
Yes or no? Could we add that sentence that's right up there on the board? Said appropriations shall require a decrease, an estimated decrease.
That's what we just voted down.
No, we, that will require a tax rate, like, no rate decrease. That's what we just thought. Yes.
And incorporated the car tax language as well.
No, I don't think we can. Yes. You're not including any mill rate.
No.
It just stopped that. Shall the town, let me make sure I have it correct, and so Cheryl can also. Shall the town of Towns' proposed two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget of fifty-nine, seven, ten, nine, ninety-nine. Reflect a spending increase of one million four ninety-six seventeen or two point five percent. Be approved.
Be adopted.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second discussion.
Yes. There is confusion. We know that voters are confused by that question. And we've just been told that there will be no clarifying information provided to the voters at the polling location. I do not believe that we should put out a question that we have heard from our residents is confusing. Especially knowing that there will be no corresponding documentation available at the polls.
There was the same good discussion we had last time when we chose to remove it. That was, that was what was presented before us was that there was confusion because people. Saw the mill rate and got confused that because they thought, so. There's confusion either way. There's confusion when we put it in, there's confusion when we don't put it in. We, to be consistent with how things are, we put it forward this way last time, to be consistent. I believe we need to put it together and present it again this way this time. I I'm, because no matter what, and it's up to us then, to ask, ask, you know, at the town representatives. To make sure that our constituents understand that and can put it out there as best as we can, so that they can clearly understand it and avoid any issues of of confusion at a later point.
Lisa, will you have time to update the tool, the online tool that shows?
Yes.
That you'll be able to look for your car taxes at the new proposed rate of the thirty-two point four-six and separate those out. Getting that, I may have to be able to put some language out there. I may not be able to get the tool to be separated. Do car taxes separately, because it's a programming function, we'll have to pay for it, which I can pay for, but. Nothing like that happens quick. Changing the numbers is there. So I may have to put a caveat under the tool saying that. You know, your mill rate is thirty-two point four-six, you'll have, this is how you manually calculate it. That's all we could do.
And is there, I'm just trying to understand what Katie was saying in what you guys were talking about in that. There's not going to be any signage of?
We can't because there, there's not enough time to get explanatory text put together and mailed to all the citizens of the town.
But, you know, I mean, at the poll.
You don't mail it to, if you don't have, well. That's a legal.
Yeah.
You can't do explanatory text. It's usually mailed out to each one of the individuals of the town.
Right.
If. I don't know if it's not mailed, because like, like I said, I don't think we can get. Mass mailing out this quick. It took us quite a bit of time last time. If I can find a legal, I can find out. And if it is, I can put a new explanatory text together with the changes. And. If we don't have to mail it, but it's an explanatory text that's readily available. I need to get legal counsel on that to make sure I do it appropriately, because I cannot let anything happen at the polls and the registrars won't either. That's not legally allowed to be there.
I think we need to find that out as quick as possible, because like I said, it will turn off a long time. The year of the multiple polling, and I am ninety-nine percent sure that there was signage up there that said, this is what you are voting.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, because every year we've had explanatory texts sent out to all the residents.
Right, but I guess my thing is, though, is that we're not, it's not any different. We're meeting one day different than the last time, and it's a two-week. Per charter, so I guess I'm questioning why we were able to do it before and we can't do it now.
I just don't know if there'll be enough turnaround time to get it out.
We'll see what can be done.
I will certainly do whatever I can. I'll try to work on it.
I would also suggest, if we can, if everybody agrees with this, that you get something on the town website, explain the difference of the new car tax.
Oh, yes.
If there's anything, if, even if there's a number they can call Jason for or something in the assessor's office, so people can be able to validate that number. And make sure we get that out on the town Facebook page.
Yeah, I planned on doing all that, but I couldn't put anything together until I knew what sort of budget we were going to have or mill rate and all that.
Yeah.
I do plan on putting a, a communication out that will be e-blasted. It will be shared on the website everywhere.
Thank you. So any other special ready to vote, because we're getting to. Will the roll call vote? Councilmember.
No.
Councilman Khan.
Councilman Nuccio.
Aye.
Councilman Luva.
Aye.
No.
I'm an I, Councilman Khan.
No.
That's four, three. So that passes. And seven, I'm going to change the motion to adjourn at seven twenty-six P M.
So much.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
C M S, we are adjourned.